Let's get started in just one moment. Mr. Fenders, you can take us out of the practice session on Zoom when you're ready. For board members, just a reminder, all your microphones are turned off. When you're ready to speak, just please turn the microphone on, bring, close your mouth. That helps with the acoustics, both in the room and for anybody who is listening in on the Zoom webinar. Mr. Fenders, if you'll just give me a thumbs up when we see a few people logged in. One more moment, thank you. Dr. Morthee, we're ready to begin when you are.
All right, good evening, everyone. This meeting of the Mawa Board of Education is open to members of the public to be physically present. Members of the public that attend will be asked to follow the same procedures as all other visitors to our schools. Those procedures can be found on the Agenda page of our website. Additionally, the board meeting will be livestreamed for viewing purposes only. Anyone wishing to view the meeting may do so by Zoom. The webinar ID is 831-0841-2625, and the required password is 740-714. All right, call the meeting to order, roll call, Mr. Bleecker, please.
Dr. Park. Ms. Ccone.
Here.
Ms. DeVenero.
Here.
Mr. DeSilva.
Here.
Mr. Denise.
Here.
Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Kizmarsky.
Here.
Student Representative, Mr. Ryan Stanford.
Here.
And Dr. Morthee.
Here. Adequate notice of agenda of this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the Record specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on May 24, 2023, in the administrative offices, 60 Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the Township Clerk. Salute to the flag. Mr. Stanford, would you?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and democracy in its most moral.
Thank you very much to our student representative. All right, we do need a short executive session in the beginning this evening, so I need a motion to recess to exec. Mr. Kizmarsky, sorry, say that quickly three times, second by Mr. Denise. All right, we should be back in about 15 minutes. Thank you. Okay, so now I need a motion to reconvene to public action meeting. Ms. Ccone, second by Mr. Hughes. Thank you. Agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please provide us with your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. Okay, I need a motion to open the meeting to the public. Mr. DeSilva, second by Mr. Gallo. Okay, we are officially open to the public. All right, seeing no one coming forward at this time, motion to close the meeting to the public. Mr. Kizmarsky, second by Mr. Hughes. All right, we are gonna just take a moment to jump to board committee reports, and we're going to have our Mawa student representative report. A little early because, you know, just to respect the time of our, you know, student representative and senior, he probably has a lot to do. So anyway, so we're gonna go before the superintendent's report, we're gonna just jump to Mr. Stanford, if you would please, our student representative report. Thank you.
Thank you. So for my report, last week, we had International Night at the high school, so all the language honor societies, which is Spanish, French, and Chinese, they all had student performances as well as booths where they shared parts of their culture, like their languages' culture from different countries. So that was a great time. We also had the National Honor Society induction, where 52 kids were inducted into our National Honor Society at Mawa High School. Last week, we also had the Spring Concert, where the orchestra and band performed, as well as Broadway comes to Mawa. And then this past weekend was the Miles from Marcus event. We had participants and volunteers from many different Mawa clubs and a bunch of Mawa teachers, and that was just a great time overall. It's always a great event every year. The Robotics Dinner and Awards Ceremony was Monday night in the cafeteria to wrap up their robotics season. The district selects strings, including students from JK, the region. The high school was also this week. Finally, we have some senior events that are coming up, which the Senior Movie Night is tonight, so I appreciate you letting me get out of there. We also have Prom, which is June 1st, next Thursday. It's gonna be at the Terrace in Paramus. We have the Senior Sunrise and the Senior Graduation, which are both gonna be later in June. So we also have the, on Thursday, we have the Spring Choir Concert, and this week has also been Spring Spirit Week. We started off with Jersey Day, Wine Day, and today was Country vs. Country Club, and then tomorrow's gonna be USA Day. We like to do those just to keep the school spirits high and get everyone excited for the end of the year, a fun little week. The Art Club is collecting artwork for the art show, which is gonna be Friday, June 9th, from 6:00 to 9:30, as well as Saturday. The state tournaments are beginning for spring sports, so all the sports, unless they've already competed, but all the sports are getting ready for that and practicing hard. And that's all I have, so thank you guys for listening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stanford. And just, what is the movie that you'll be watching tonight?
We'll be, we'll be watching Negroes.
Oh, Negroes. I think that was up for a vote, was that not?
It was voted for by the...
And I just wanna just interject quickly, this was in my president's report, but since you will be leaving, I just wanna give you congratulations, because our very own Ryan Stanford received the NJ SIAA Scholar Athlete Award for Mawa High School, so a round of applause. Congratulations. All right, you're dismissed. Thank you. All right, and now we will move on to Dr. Datura and our superintendent's report, because we will be honoring our Bergen County Teachers of the Year. Excellent.
Yes, can you hear me? Okay. So I know that people are here to celebrate our amazing educators. Before we do get started, I think there's something important that I would like to share with the community. Today was a special day for me. I don't know how many people know about a promposal, but I received a promposal, oh, I received a promposal today from our seniors. So we have our senior prom on June 1st, and it was absolutely the best part of my day. So I just wanted to share it with everyone, since if I bring home my wife, she really won't care. I'm galling. I mean, it's, this is an exciting time, so. All right. In all seriousness, we are, we were so excited to have this opportunity to bring six educators from across our district to our board meeting to celebrate them. This is the first time that Mawa is taking part in this celebration. We talk all the time about how special Mawa is and how our educators, when you go from school to school, you see amazing things happening in each and every classroom. It's the best part of our jobs. We get a chance to see all the work that's being done to grow our learners from pre-K all the way through 12, and this is an opportunity for us to stop and really show our thanks to educators that exemplify everything that Mawa is all about. So let me kinda talk to you a little bit about what this program is. The Bergen County Teacher Recognition Program was developed in 1985 for the purpose of acknowledging teachers who exhibit outstanding performance, and we believe that it is time to join this cadre of countywide recognition by honoring some of our own. According to the program's guidelines, each district is invited to select teachers to be recognized for their achievements. Please join us this evening in celebrating the group of teachers who will be representing Mawa at the Bergen County Teacher of the Year Ceremony tomorrow, May 25th at 11:45 at the Glen Point Marriott. We are proud to have all of you represent us this week. So we have to have them all stand, right? So we have Ally Bauer from Betsy Ross School. Ally teaches first grade. Christine Petrowski teaches third grade at GW. Jenny Letterer teaches second grade at Lenape Meadows. Craig Alphano, who could not be here because his son is receiving his confirmation this evening, but he wanted to be here. He is our school social worker over at Joyce Kilmer School. And Mr. Mike Feeney, the woman ally, who teaches social studies at Greenwich. And last but certainly not least, we have Carol Farrell, who teaches special ed at the St. Patrick's Church. And what a great closure to Carol's career, right? Because as we all know, she's already announced her retirement, so this is a wonderful way to enjoy time here with us. So the manner with which these six wonderful people were selected, we had building-based committees that looked at nominations and ultimately decided upon six, these six individuals who will be representing our school district. All six very different from one another in practice and personality, but all so wonderful. What was just as great is we sent out a link to our buildings to get some video clips for some of their colleagues to speak on their behalf, so we wanted to spend this time watching that collective video together before we honor them one by one.
So fun fact about Craig, he and I actually attended Mawa High School in the 1990s at the same time, and I think one of his favorite things to share is that he tutored me in some math class along the way. And though I'm not certain of that fact, I am certain that he is so well-deserving of this acknowledgement of being selected as JK's Teacher of the Year. Craig is an all-around awesome human being. He's kind, generous, empathetic, and funny, and go on and on. He makes it a point every year to get to know every student in our building. He addresses each student by their name, and he genuinely engages in conversations with them. You can tell that the kids feel heard and respected by him. When he comes into a classroom for a character education class, it's as if a celebrity has just walked in, and there's cheering and high-fiving, and it's just really wonderful to see. Craig knows how to connect with people, and I'm really proud to call him a colleague and a friend, and I want to congratulate him and all the other recipients of this award this year, and it's great to be a part of Mawa.
Congratulations, Mr. Feeney. I am so honored to share in this moment with you, as you are named Ramakovich Middle Schools Teacher of the Year for this year. For the entirety of my career, you have been a consummate professional. You influence students each and every day in a positive way. They adore you. You work very well with your colleagues and parents, and you are so deserving of this honor. So please embrace it, enjoy it, and continue to be amazing. Thank you.
Congratulations, Mrs. Bauer, on receiving the Bergen County Teacher of the Year Award. You are so deserving of this honor. You always inspire, motivate, and engage all of your students. You have such a passion for teaching, and you genuinely care about each and every child in your class, and you always find a way to make learning interesting and engaging and fun.
You're empathetic, you're compassionate to the mediaists of students, and to us as well.
Absolutely. We absolutely love working with you. You are so creative. You are so dedicated to your students, their parents, the families, the staff, and we just, we love you, and we are so happy and excited for you.
Yes, we are so lucky to have you as a teammate. Congratulations, Ally.
Congratulations.
I cannot be more thrilled to have Jenny Letterer be the Teacher of the Year for whatnot being at O'Smiley Elementary School. She's a warm, loving, supportive educator. As many of you know, she has labeled her class or titled her class "The Peace Class", and when you walk into her room, you feel just that. The students are willing to take risks, learn from one another, and just try their best. Jenny's connection with the students goes beyond the athletes. She truly cares about them as people and really wants them to be the best versions of themselves. As a colleague, she is one of our SEL coaches, and she is always offering suggestions, lending a helping hand to her colleagues to help them in any way possible. Jenny Letterer, I am proud that you are our Teacher of the Year for Lenneby Meadows this year. It is a well-deserved honor, and I congratulate you and thank you for all the work.
Congratulations, Mike. Your students are so lucky to have you. You bring history and life for them through all of your stories. As colleagues here at The Ridge, you are a wealth of knowledge for us. So this is a very well-deserved award. Congratulations.
Craig Alfano is an incredible friend, colleague, and educator. I believe that Craig truly makes Mawa and Joyce Kilmer such a better place to be and a better place to work. I'm so happy for him that he's being honored with this award. And honestly, I cannot think of anyone better than Craig to win Teacher of the Year here for Joyce Kilmer. I think the one thing that makes Craig really stand out and make him really special is his ability to form relationships and connect with our students. I always say when you are with Craig and you're walking the hallways, it's almost like you're with a celebrity. You can't walk down hallways or walk to your car with him without all the kids yelling out, "Mr. Alfano, Mr. Alfano," and they all come up and swarm and talk with him. It's really, really special to watch that interaction, because all these kids that are right up to him, he knows everything about them. And he can immediately start into these conversations about how everything's going, how things are going with their year. And the kids are so comfortable and open with him when they talk. And I think that that is so special. And again, it really tells you a lot about him as a person. Something really great that happened this week was him and I went out to lunch. We were walking to the car, so we were getting, "Mr. Alfano, Mr. Alfano." We get to the car, we drive to lunch. And even when we got to the place to eat, it didn't stop. And right away, we got, "Hey, Mr. Alfano." And it was a former student of his that's now in college, recognized Craig, and immediately they just jump into talking about what he's up to, what his summer plans are, about his internship that ain't coming up, about his future goals. And that interaction was so special to witness, because this former student was so excited to share this information with Craig. It was just something that was so great to watch, and I really think tells you so much again about how Craig is as a human being and as an educator, and how special he is to our district in Mawa. I am again so happy that Craig won this award, and I cannot think of someone better than Craig to be Teacher of the Year.
Hi, we're here today to congratulate Carol Farrell for being Teacher of the Year for Mawa High School and to say a little bit about her. My experience with Carol has been a wonderful one, and I wanna thank her for all the work she's done with mindfulness as a mindfulness coach in, in our high school. She's done all kinds of activities for kids during lunchtime, during our class times, and always bringing to the forefront the betterment of our students. So thank you, Carol.
Carol, I wanna thank you for all your many years of professionalism. You worked with all kinds of students at all kinds of hours for our district to bring them the very best educational experiences. You've been a collaborator, you've been a reading specialist. You have so many gifts and talents that you share with our building, and we will miss you. We will miss your professionalism, and we will certainly miss you as being part of our team. We wish you nothing but health and happiness as you travel with your family and your husband, and enjoy your children. Congratulations on your retirement.
Have a great retirement, Carol.
Congratulations, Mike Feeney, on earning Teacher of the Year here at Ramaco Ridge. It is such an honor and privilege to work with you every day here at The Ridge. Our Ramaco team students are so lucky to have you in class, but also to have your presence in the hallways, always saying hello, have a good day, friendly face to our students and staff alike. You're always a team player who shares their ideas, and The Ridge is lucky to have you. Congratulations, Mike.
Hey, Craig. We're so lucky to have you on our team, as you're such an asset to the entire Joyce Kilmer community. Your expertise in providing guidance and support has not only assisted students in overcoming obstacles, but has also empowered them to discover their potential.
Your dedication makes you an invaluable asset to JK. Thank you for the positive impact you continue to make for being an exceptional role model for all.
Congratulations, Craig, on this amazing accomplishment. You deserve it. We love you. We love you.
Hi, this is Jen Colby from Lenneby Meadows, and I'm honored to speak on behalf of one of my colleagues, Jenny Letterer. Whenever I think of Jenny, something always comes to mind. The peace sign. Jenny's class is known as the Peace Class, and I also think she keeps the peace in school, in her classroom, and with herself, too. Jenny always has a way of putting things in perspective to help us see things the right way. She thinks of others and makes everybody feel welcome, especially if you're a new teacher or you've been here for a long amount of time. In her class, she asks riveting questions, and she produces strong readers and writers. She encourages her class and her colleagues, and sees the good in people. As for herself, I love hearing Jenny's stories about growing up in Michigan and going back to visit there. Her family is very important to her, and I think Jenny is a beautiful person inside and out, and I feel very honored to work with her. So just remember, when you see the peace sign, think of Jenny Letterer, teacher extraordinaire.
Hi, I'm Christina Zucaro, and I'm so excited to celebrate Christine Petrowski. When you think about our GW family, Christine pops in as one of the first people that you think about. She is so involved, and she's the one that our staff and others in the district really look to as a role model. She has been instrumental in the success of including our media students here at GW. All learners in her class feel as though they have opportunities to participate and grow. They're making tremendous strides all year long and are well-prepared to head off to Joyce Kilmer. Our staff feels confident to support these learners by using some of Christine's tried and true strategies. She's available to share these at meetings, official trainings, and, you know, those lunchtime chats, too. She's always making herself available for us. So thank you, Christine, for being the one that we can turn to, and enjoy this well-deserved acknowledgement of all your hard work. We love you very much.
Ms. Allen Bauer is our Betsy Ross Teacher of the Year this year. And as her principal, I can say wholeheartedly that Ms. Bauer is such an instrumental part of the Betsy Ross team. We're so thankful to have her as a part of not just our first grade, but our entire school. She's kind, she's caring, she's approachable to all the students in her class, and really with the students in our building. Ms. Bauer has a unique way of making learning so fun and accessible for all of her learners, no matter what their needs might be. Her communication is top-notch, whether it's with her colleagues, parents, or students. She can always get the message across clearly and concisely to anyone so that they can understand. But best of all, Ms. Bauer is a true team player. You put her to task, she'll make it happen. She knows what's best for her students, she makes it happen for them. She knows how to support her colleagues, and she makes things happen for them, too. And for that and so many other reasons, Ms. Bauer is proudly the Betsy Ross Teacher of the Year this year.
Hi, I'm Beth Clark, second grade teacher at Lenneby Meadows. I've been working with Jenny Letterer in the same building for most of my career, but more closely in the past two and a half years as her grade-level colleague. And I've also had the pleasure of being her SEL leadership partner. When you walk into Mrs. Letterer's Peace Classroom, the positive climate and rapport with her students is undeniable. Her morning meetings set the tone for her class. Her mindfulness activities and brain breaks throughout the day show she's always putting the social and emotional needs of her students first. One of my favorite things about her class is the peace sign. You can always find her walking through the halls, or of course, her line maker walking through the halls, holding that peace sign up proudly as they walk to their next destination.
Mr. Feeney is an incredible educator. Whether it's students, colleagues, or parents, just the mention of his name brings a smile to people's faces. Mike's approach to teaching is highly organized, predictable, and student-centered. These are qualities that we know help students thrive. As students enter The Ridge in sixth grade, his classroom quickly becomes a haven for them, a place where they know they can be successful and at the same time, challenge themselves. During passing time, Mike can be found in the hallway, constantly connected with students, advising them, assisting them, and encouraging them. Those moments are incredibly important for middle school students. Mike is a master storyteller. Dropping into his classroom is like sitting on a comfy sofa in a friend's living room. Though that is the learning environment that Mike creates each and every day for his students. Mike's entire professional career has been built on service, and it's certainly awesome to showcase and highlight the service that he has provided for our school, our community, and our profession. Congratulations, Mike.
Carol's such an amazing colleague to work with. We love her. We're gonna miss her next year. She's supportive of every one of us, always cheering us on, always there for us and all of the children that she worked with over the years.
I'm absolutely going to miss Carol, as, as will all the kids in this building who she helps day to day. Carol's constantly helping kids at lunch, after school, giving up her time. Carol does an awesome job of supporting kids through the reading and writing process, and we wish her all the best.
Christine Petrowski is a one-of-a-kind educator here at George Washington School. She makes such a difference in our building in so many ways. In the hearts of our students, she is one of our SEL coaches and leaders, and she has done so much to impact not just her own class, but all of the kids here at GW from kindergarten through third grade. She also does so much work to help make sure our teachers have the tools they need to support this important endeavor that we're doing with our kids. On the outside, Christine also is beautifying our school all the time with different ideas on how to bring gardening and beauty to the grounds of GW, but in a hands-on way that makes sense for our students. Those are two little snippets of the ways that Christine makes a difference for her students every single year. Kids love Mrs. Petrowski, they love the learning that happens in her class. She always creates a sense of calm, she always has a great sense of humor, she brings joy to her colleagues, she brings joy to our school. And we are so grateful for the passion, dedication, and time that Christine dedicates for, you know, all of the learners here at GW. So thank you for being you, thank you for everything you do. We love you, Mrs. Petrowski.
Mr. Feeney, congratulations on this special day. Your compassion for kids, your love of teaching, your dedication to social studies, and creating a safe space to ask questions is why you are truly valued in this department. We love you, we are so excited to celebrate you, and we're hoping for many more years of Mr. Feeney and a wonderful classroom that you create for students. So thank you, enjoy, and know that you are truly valued.
Hello there. My name is Dr. William, the principal here at Joyce Kilmer School.
Hello, everyone. I'm Ashley Adams, the assistant principal at Joyce Kilmer School. We wanted to take this moment to recognize our Teacher of the Year, Mr. Craig Alfano. Craig, we love you. You are, like we like to say around here, the hardest-working man in the showbiz. We can always count on you for student issues, staff issues. Anytime we need anything, we know that you will always be there to help us. You have become a friend, a confidant, and just someone that we really, really enjoy working with every single day. So we are happy to celebrate you and congratulations.
Yes, I cannot agree more with everything that Ms. Adams is sharing. If you've seen Mr. Alfano work with a student, it'd just be excitement and admiration that they show for him in the ways that he cares for them. It's something special, and it's absolutely rare. And I think it just, it speaks volumes to who he is as a person and what he does, and how his profession, that counseling profession, can have such an impact on the life of a child here at school. So we're so grateful and so thankful for everything that Mr. Alfano does for us, and especially for the students here at Joyce Kilmer. But just super excited for everything else that he has to bring. I couldn't, I couldn't think of a better person to receive this award. So congratulations, Mr. Alfano. Thank you again, we are lucky to have you.
Absolutely.
Hi, I'm Nikki Kurt, and I am honored to speak about Christine Petrowski as our George Washington School Teacher of the Year. When we think of Christine, I think of a feeling. I think of being supported, of being cared for, of being loved, and being heard. And that is the same feeling that the students feel when they are in her classroom. Every voice is heard, and every voice has equal opportunity to share their ideas and what is important to them. And that's what sets Christine apart from other educators. Christine is a leader in our George Washington School family in that she is always there to support all of our colleagues, our staff members, whether it is work-related or it is home and personal life-related. She will find a way to support you, to provide you with whatever you need, whether it be an ear to listen to or cookies to bake for a party on the weekend. Through the classroom environment that Christine creates, she creates core memories within her students that last a lifetime and that they look back on and use later in life. She uses her love of gardening and of planting to teach her students lessons and tie in social and emotional learning strategies that we use throughout our school. As one of our SEL coaches, Christine plays an integral role in connecting the social and emotional learning that we do with Tap in Tuesdays to service projects that we do once per month on Spirit Days, just like the self-affirmation mirrors that we made for children at Moorestown Hospital. Christine is beyond dedicated to the work that she does in education and with her colleagues. And we are lucky to know her, and we are privileged to work beside her and learn from her every single day. Christine, I could not send more congratulations to you. We are so proud of you, and we love you so much. Congratulations.
So I guess to formalize this, if we could have all five of you just stand up for another round of applause. What's amazing about each of you is, as you can hear from the video, but also as we, even when we're in the building and we're walking past your classrooms, each of you, because every time we pass your classroom, we're listening, right? You're all not just great teachers, but even more importantly, you are great human beings. So I want you to know, we really believe in you, and we really thank you for your time and your effort and your work here in this district. The, the next piece, we do not have rehearsed. We have, we have something to give to you. I'm going to let Dr. Ratoro take it from here. So obviously, we're gonna be celebrating you tomorrow at the county level, but we felt like, obviously, we have the wonderful video capturing how special all of you are. We also wanted to provide you a gift of our gratitude for all the work that you've done with our students, not only this year, but in years past. So we'll call you guys up one by one in, in that awkward fashion of you walking up and receiving a gift. So let's, let's do that. If, if you'd like to have a little speech here, we're welcome to.
So essentially, what this is, it's an apple, obviously representing who you are as a teacher. The stands have been made by our woodshop students at Mawa High School.
As opposed to handing them across the table, I felt like it's just most of them. Thanks, man. The first person, Ally Bauer. Ally, do you wanna say anything in the microphone? I know it's unusual, your style, but.
I, I just wanna say, I currently work alongside and have worked alongside so many amazing teachers in Mawa, and to be selected amongst them is a true honor. So thank you very much, I appreciate it.
We appreciate it. From GW, Christine Petrowski. You know you wanna say something.
I'm wildly nervous.
Christine loves the microphone.
Thank you. I'm beyond blessed to work in this district, to be spending my whole career here. Again, just like Ally said, I work alongside such talented, dedicated individuals. So to be chosen for this is truly an honor. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, guys.
From Lennape Meadows, Jenny Letter.
Jenny also plays the guitar, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, no one mentioned it, but I would... Thank you. Here you go.
What can I say that the other two didn't? I really feel like we're all Teachers of the Year every single year. And so I humbly, you know, accept this award only because everybody, everybody is to be honored in the Mawa district, honestly. We just have the best, and I have a lot to compare to. My daughters went to the school, the school district, and they are successful because of the people that they have. Right, Mike?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. And so anyway, I'm so grateful to work with the people that I work with because it just keeps getting better. And so I think we're all to be celebrated, that's all.
Ramapo Ridge, Mike Feeny.
Thanks so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. And the others have said it so well, but I think so much is to be learned by, from the people that we work with. I see all the teachers I work with at Ramapo Ridge coming up with creative lessons. I see them coaching teams. I see them interacting with students. And my goodness, what I've learned from them, right? What I pick up from them, how they inspire me every single day. I really have to give so much credit to the people I work with, just as you did. But thank you all so much.
Last, but certainly not least, from Mawa High School, Carol Farrell.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. And how can you say anything more than to be a Mawa Thunderbird? And the way that birds fly, geese flock, and that the whole idea of indeed that we hold each other up and we give each other lift. And this is an amazing lift for me as I exit Mawa High School. I do so, like, almost with great heart. It's been a wonderful district, and you're all so wonderful. Thank you.
So with that said, we want to thank you. Of all of our six nominees, they have over 100 years of experience in the district. So we want to thank you. We want to thank some of the family for showing up, students who... We have a sign. Can you just raise this? Oh, thank you so much. Best teacher. I mean, does it get better than that? It really doesn't. But thank you. We hope you have a great night, and we'll see you all tomorrow.
All right, thank you, Dr. Dittoro, for that wonderful report. And again, congratulations. All right, we'll take about a two-minute... We'll just, as a board, take a two-minute recess, then we'll come right back. Calling Mr. Gallo and Mr. Denise. Gallo, Gallo, back to the table.
Mr. Gallo.
Mr. Gallo, calling Mr. Gallo and Mr. Denise. Can we return to the table to continue our meeting? Thank you very much. Congratulations again, everybody. We'd like to resume our meeting. Thank you very much. Mr. Denise?
Mr. Feeny and I crossed paths.
Mike, you could have been there for 20 minutes. We know, so. All right, thank you very much. I think right for time, we'll just continue. All right, we're going to move on to Mr. Bleeker's report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Worth. Just a handful of updates on some of the projects that we have ongoing in the district. Our bleacher replacement project has finished the construction of the bleachers. The press box is installed. Just doing some detail work in the press box itself, hooking up some of the electronics. Then we have a fence install to occur, but that project is near completion. We had a tour event with the Facility Committee earlier this week, and very much pleased with the outcomes right now. Looking forward to what will be available to everybody to enjoy in the coming weeks and definitely over the summer, for the start of the fall sports season. We also have our track resurfacing that's going to be beginning in a couple of weeks as well, well underway and getting ready for that project to begin. And the last project that we have upcoming is at George Washington School, a replacement of HVAC systems over there. Again, another project that we're looking forward to beginning in just a matter of a few weeks. Thank you very much, that's my report for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Bleeker. Appreciate it. Dr. Fair, your report this evening.
Yes, I have four retirements to announce, as you can see on this evening's agenda. The first is Agenda Item 18B, Mr. Brian Royak, our second-grade teacher at Betsy Ross School. Mr. Royak has been a dedicated member at Betsy Ross School, as well as other schools in our district, throughout 25 years of service to Mawa Township Public Schools. Most recently, Mr. Royak served as a second-grade teacher at Betsy Ross, and his kind and caring nature made him a positive addition to the staff. We are so grateful for all of the wonderful learning experiences and memories Mr. Royak helped many of our students create throughout his career. The Betsy Ross family extends our congratulations to Brian as he begins this new chapter. Our second retirement is Kathy Martinelli. She's an instructional paraprofessional at Ramapo Ridge. Mrs. Martinelli has served in the role of instructional paraprofessional at Ramapo Ridge for the past 11 and a half years. In this role, Kathy has consistently shown herself to be a kind, compassionate, and supportive advocate for the students with whom she has worked. Kathy has served as a member of the Paraprofessional Advisory Council, functioning as a liaison between the paras at Ramapo Ridge and Building and Central Office Administration. Mrs. Martinelli is trusted and beloved by her paraprofessional teacher and administrative colleagues, and she will be greatly missed in her retirement. Mrs. Martinelli looks forward to traveling with her newly-retired husband, Mark, welcoming her first grandchild in a couple of months, and continuing with her creative knitting business. So we congratulate Kathy on her retirement. Third, Agenda Item 18D, Miss Pat DeFries. What a wonderful human being over at Lennape Meadows School as an instructional paraprofessional. She's been a paraprofessional for close to 20 years, and she will be dearly missed at Lennape Meadows. During that time in her 20 years, she has established many positive relationships with colleagues and students. One undeniable thing about Pat is her positive attitude and her caring demeanor, as she works so lovingly with our preschool students, who she dedicated most of her educational career to. Not only has Pat made this sort of impact on our children, but her interactions with staff members have been equally kind and filled with love. She has certainly made an imprint on the culture over at Lennape Meadows, and she will be extremely missed. Last, but certainly not least, Agenda Item 18E announces Jack Bertruniak, who works as the Pomptonian Food Director for the Food Services in the District. So Jack joined Pomptonian in Mawa in 2001 and was recognized immediately for his culinary skills and dedication to customer service. Jack takes great pride in the team he has developed and in providing a variety of meals to the students he serves. He genuinely cares for people and listens to the students and faculty to customize the menu and service. To keep the cafeteria an interesting place to visit, Jack implements new events and dishes and really cares about the presentation. Most noteworthy is really from a personal perspective. When schools closed during COVID, Jack really showed up. He worked tirelessly to make sure that meals were available for students and families in need. Sometimes the kitchen was a lonely place without the staff and students present. Jack remained dedicated to the Mawa community and adapted to serving meals on the go to families for pickup. And according to the Vice President of Pomptonian Food Services, she states that Jack's Eggplant Parm is a legend and often requested by the students and faculty. He also submitted that recipe to Pomptonian's Recipe of the Month competition and won that month and the Top Cook Award for that year. In his retirement, we know that Jack will continue as a proud father, a big concertgoer, and a huge Cowboys fan, and we wish him all the best. We will be honoring all of our retirees at our next board meeting on June 14. And there's more. So we have someone to announce as, who we are recommending as a new member of our Principal/Assistant Principal Team. Natasha Carrera, you could just, you could wave, you could stand, and your husband is clapping. So Agenda Item 18H recommends Natasha. Our Assistant Principal interview process yielded 76 applications, which resulted in 15 brief meetings through Zoom with candidates and six in-person interviews. Mrs. Carrera has served, as all of you know, Supervisor of Instruction K-5 for the last two years in our district. Through her role as supervisor, Mrs. Carrera has proven her capability as a leader, which was articulated very clearly in our interview process. Prior to working in Mawa, Mrs. Carrera served as a first-grade and third-grade teacher at Senator Frank Lowenberg School Number 6 in Patterson Public Schools. Through the interview process, Mrs. Carrera demonstrated an understanding of our district, aligned to the vision of our instructional program's trajectory. And equally as important, Natasha has an innate care for Lennape Meadows School specifically. Not only are we excited, not only is Natasha excited, but Mr. Waika, who is sitting beside her to her left, Principal of Lennape Meadows, is also excited about Mrs. Carrera potentially working alongside him next school year as per your vote. Natasha, great job. And that's my report.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Fair.
Thank you.
And congratulations to our retirees and welcome in a new position, Mrs. Carrera. Thank you very much. All right, can we ask what her object was, Mrs. Carrera? For the interview, they always have...
So my original object to come into Mawa was my softball. It was a pitching softball, because throughout my childhood growing up, I played softball for many different teams. And in my high school team, I was the captain, and we had a huge struggle with our pitching. So as a captain, I thought it was my job to kind of step it up, and I taught myself how to pitch with this ball. And I said that this would demonstrate my leadership in saying I'm always going to step up to the challenges and to the plate one needed most.
That's awesome.
And you surely have.
That is an amazing story. I guess, thank you.
Your husband wanted to clap again.
That's wonderful. I like it because I think this, that sort of brings a different perspective to what people bring as their object. So thank you very much for sharing. I put you on the spot. I apologize, but thank you very much. All right, President's Report. So first, I'm going to just start with congratulating. So our Class of 2019 Mawa grads this month have all been kind of, many of them graduating, the Class of 2023 from various colleges, and they made it through two years of COVID. They've made it through, I'm sure, many struggles and succeeded to graduation. So the reason this comes up, because there was, the first thing on the Twitter feed... Now, on a personal note, my daughter, actually, Rhea, who graduated from Mawa High School and is at University of Delaware, is graduating this weekend with a major in Exercise Science and a minor in Spanish for healthcare. So, and then I look at the Twitter feed, and the first thing that comes up is a very touching story of another grad from her class, 2019, Grace Mariani, who actually, I know the family well, and Rhea and she were friendly. And there, her service dog, Justin, received a diploma from the Seton Hall President, Dr. Nair, 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 for attending all of Grace's classes with her during her college experience. And I thought, and there was a video, I couldn't, I was trying to click to open the video. Unfortunately, I couldn't open the video, but I thought, how sweet and how touching. And so again, congratulations to the Class of 2023 from college, but our Mawa grads from 2019. So I thought it was a nice story. Next, we have congratulations to our 2023 Captain of the Baseball Team, Zach Salfin. He was selected to the New Jersey Senior All-Star Baseball Game, which will be on June 12th. So congratulations, Zach. We also have another Mawa High School graduate, Kyle Teal, 2023 ACC Player of the Year. And not only is he a Mawa grad, so go T-Bird, but he, I'm an alum of UVA, and he is a Wahoo Wah, too. So good for Kyle Teal, and he seems to be breaking all sorts of records and doing a tremendous job, so go T-Birds. Great turnout at the Miles for Marcus event. Thank you to everyone who participated. We have a few in the track and field world. Brayden Lo Massey in the Bergen County Meet of Champions placed fifth in the Boys' 3,200-meter Race. Who's good at like math?
Two miles.
Two miles. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. You're like the math guy, Dr. Dittoro. And then we have Zoe Merriman, also in the Meet of Champions. She placed fourth in the Girls' 800-Meters. And then we have George Calcanis and Demetrius Hester, both medaled in Boys' Javelin. Now, Demetrius placed fifth. George won the entire competition with a throw of, I think this is feet, correct? 193 feet and 6 inches in the javelin. Also, congratulations to our Mawa High School National Honor Society inductees. So that's all I have.
Can I just add one more thing?
Yes, please.
To continue the celebration of Mawa sports...
Yes.
Our girls' softball team, in their first round of the States...
Softball.
...won seven to one yesterday against Dumont. They're now in the second round of the States. So cheers. I was going to get to that one, too. It's against Jefferson Friday at 4:00. So everyone who is able to attend, please do so. Again, Mawa sports on the map, second round of the States. We were all about the plaques on Ridge Road.
Rhea played softball, too. Love those softball players, just love them. Excellent, excellent. Congratulations to everyone. And in spring sports, as you... Congratulations to everyone and in spring sports as you're going to your state championships as well. All right, so let's go to Board Committee reports. Who wants to start us off? Mr. Denise with policy.
Policy has 11 policies on the table. I'm not going to do a report on them because they actually mirror the ones that we did for the support staff. So it's a, we just carried that over to the teaching staff. And I already reported that on a previous meeting, so.
Perfect.
That's my report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Denise. Appreciate that. Over on this side of the table, Mr. Gallo, Ms. Daveniero. No Community Corner. All right, we have a short report from Instruction and Curriculum. So we had our May meeting. One of the things that we'd actually discussed at the April meeting, but then we elaborated further, Dr. Vivino elaborated further for us in our May meeting, is something called iReady. This is a universal screening tool, which we're going to be using in our district for kindergarten through third grade. And she actually showed us a little PowerPoint, demonstrated the video for the kindergartners. Staff is going to receive professional development on this from the administrative team. And basically, the whole concept of this universal assessment is these are in-house assessments by teachers to determine what are the students' skill strengths and weaknesses. And then I think they'll be, we'll be doing this three times a year to sort of assess as we go along. And it's a computer-based, reports are generated, and so it will be easier to really follow the progress of our students. This really keeps in with our strategic plan as well and also with our push for data. And this is very data-driven, so we can see and teachers can follow students along the course of the year. So that was pretty much the most important thing that we discussed. It's very exciting. So that's a short report from Instruction and Curriculum. All right. Any Board Member remarks at this point? Mr. Gallo?
Just very briefly, I had the opportunity to attend the International Night, which has come back after the pandemic. And I just wanted to recognize Courtney Corella and her team of Feng Biang, Lauren Krinkta, Gabrielle Castro, Marie Winepelt. They're all there coordinating of their students' efforts to, they had the whole cafeteria set up. I would say there is probably well over 450, maybe 200 participants, parents, kids, students. And they had, the highlight were the performances. There were students who sang in languages they were studying, Spanish or Chinese, French. There was poetry readings, stuff that I would never have the fortitude to do myself. But they performed with energy and enthusiasm. Too much applause from their fellow students. So it was a really neat event to see that coming back, so.
Very nice, exciting. Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Anybody else this evening? All right, then we'll move on to, oh, Ms. Daveniero. I'm sorry.
So I did have a Community Corner report, but I do have a good Community Corner thought for everybody. As we're at the end of the school year, as we're at the end of the school year, we're all getting ready to wrap up, and we're really excited. You know, we're counting down to the end of the year. But a lot of us are also already thinking about the fall. So I'm actively involved at two schools, getting ready to leave one, which I'm not ready to talk about, getting ready to move to the middle school, also not ready to talk about. But we need volunteers, and we talk about it a lot. And we, you hear me talk about it a lot, you hear other parents talk about it as well. And we're looking at volunteer lists, specifically I'm doing for Joyce Comer next year, but it applies really across the board. And it's just my annual plea, like even an hour of your time goes a very long way in making these programs and events happen for kids. So all year, you've heard me talk about all sorts of events that we do at the schools and things that we're super proud of and really excited for. And it does not happen without parental volunteers. So it's just an end-of-year thank you, I guess, for everybody who stepped up this year to make really incredible events. We recently did the color run at Joyce Comer, which was amazing. And it's only possible because of the parents who step up off their days. We have Field Day at Monapi tomorrow. You know, going through the end of the year with their big pop-out and fifth grade celebration, which, you know, thank you to the volunteers who are on the agenda tonight that we're going to be approving to make these events happen. But looking at the list for going into next year, like just, you know, those Google Forms are out there. Like, please, please take the time to step up. We need the help, definitely. Specifically at Joyce Comer, just a small plug, Kate and I are co-presidents this year. Kate is graduating out. I am still going to be there next year, but we need to replace those executive board members. And we see it at JK, and we're really seeing it at the Ridge as well. That executive board is so important, and it is a decent amount of time that you dedicate, but it's so fulfilling at the end of the day for what you're able to do. So please reach out to any of the existing HSOs that are board members that are there now. And really, every little bit helps. So this is the time that we start planning for next year. So I just kind of wanted to get a step ahead of that for everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Daveniero. And I think all of us have volunteered, probably in this district, those of us sitting at this table, in a variety of ways. And all I can say is, again, you know, you kind of get out what you put in. So the volunteering experience is, you know, just wonderful. You meet people, you get to kind of like see what your kids are doing. I, you know, they used to hate that I attended certain events, but, you know, it's all great because you get to kind of see what's happening. So again, we're always, always, we appreciate all the volunteers in the district. As Ms. Daveniero said, we recognize your contributions. And to anyone even thinking about it, grab a buddy, talk to someone, and you know what? A few hours, it really truly makes a difference. So thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, old business. Let's take the minutes from the May 3 public work session. Mr. Bleeker? We need a motion. We need a motion. Thank you. Mr. Kizmarski, thank you. And Mr. Gallo, second. Now we need a roll call. Thank you.
Ms. Secco?
Yes.
Ms. Daveniero?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski?
Yes.
And Dr. Worthy?
Yes. All right, let's move on to 17, new business. Let's take A to EE. I need a motion on the floor. Mr. Denise, second by Mr. Hughes. All right, I think we got a roll call, Mr. Bleeker.
Ms. Secco?
Yes.
Ms. Daveniero?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes, except on 17A, I will be abstaining from check number 111307 and 111411. And I will also be abstaining on 17V, like in Victor.
Thank you. Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski?
Yes, well, I'll be abstaining on 17Y regarding SRO as I'm on the other side of that equation.
And Dr. Worthy?
Yes. All right, now let's take new business personnel. I would like to first take B, C, D, and E, our retirements, to give proper recognition. So if I could have a motion on the floor to do 18B, C, D, and E. Mr. Kizmarski, second by Mr. Gallo. All right, roll call, please, Mr. Bleeker.
Ms. Secco?
Yes.
Ms. Daveniero?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes. On the E, I'd like to just mention that in the bar queue, we worked with Jack on Puffin Dogs and Burger, Pilling Dogs and Burgers. A great guy to work with.
Yes.
On the great ship over there. So congratulations on your retirement, yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski?
Yes.
And Dr. Worthy?
Yes, and thank you to all our retirees for their service to the district, and we wish you well in your retirement. All right, next, I'd like to take 18A and then H to MM. All right, motion on the floor, please. Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. Hughes. All right, roll call, please, Mr. Bleeker.
Ms. Secco?
Yes.
Ms. Daveniero?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Congratulations on 18N to Ms. Carrera. And a big thank you to all the volunteers in 18LL, yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes, and also 18H, I'd like to congratulate Natasha on her new position. I remember her first meeting her two years ago to curriculum meeting where she, at her first presentation, had enough energy probably to electrify the entire district. And that energy she will be bringing to Monape Meadows, and we wish her all the best there.
Thank you.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski?
Yes.
And Dr. Worthy?
Yes. All right, we are now, congratulations? It's official. Yes, and you could stay if you'd like, but if you'd like to leave at this time, we would understand. Thank you, guys. Thank you for staying. Congratulations again. All right, I need a motion to open our meeting to the public at this time. Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. Hughes. All right, we are officially open to the public. I didn't read our public questions or comment part, but this is public participation. I kind of skipped over that in accordance with bylaw 0167. All right, we'll see you now and coming forward. We are now going to motion to close the meeting to the public. Mr. Kizmarski and Mr. Gallo, we're doing a little bit of the shortcut today. All right, sorry. Now, we will motion, I need a motion to recess to executive session. We will not return from that. We will adjourn from there directly. Mr. Denise, and second by Mr. Kizmarski. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. Good night. All right. Sorry, skipped right over that.